Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of May 7, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
This right present is Mr. Bessie. Mr. Slavin, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, Mr. Bowen, and Mr. Sullivan. Are yours lost?
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Slavin to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
One last time.
It's behind you, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the public understands we do have an executive session scheduled now. So what I'm going to ask my clerk to make a motion to go into executive session. We will clear the room and we will lock the doors. After we are finished with the executive session, we will recess back into open session. In the meantime, on your screen, it says something like "Executive Session, Please Stand By", or something like that. Okay? So may I have a motion to go into executive session, please, Mr. Clerk?
I move to go. Thank you. I move to go into executive session at 18:32.
Second?
For the reasons, please.
For the reasons, you've got to read them.
For the reasons. MGLC 30A, 21, reason two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Police Chief Walter W. Korea. B, MGLC 30A, 21, reason two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, HR Director Doreen Allen England.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will be going into executive session now. Mr. Day, will you let me know when you are done? And would you make sure that the door is locked and that the posting is on it, please? Good evening, Wareham, again. Thank you for your patience. We were in executive session for two contracts, and we are now back in open session. Before we begin the rest of the agenda, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for Pam Dudley. Pam Dudley worked for the Council on Aging here in the town of Wareham for over 15 years. She died recently, so I would ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. Pam was indispensable for the Council on Aging. She was a tremendous advocate for seniors, and she'll be sole of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask for residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than 10 minutes of resident comments per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board members will not respond or comment. Ms. Slavin, would you step forward, identify yourself for the record, please? Push the green button.
It's on.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sandy Slavin. I'm here to share with something that happened. The garden club was picking up and cleaning up our two memorial gardens at the end of Minnit and Narrows and Oak and Indian Nick, and we found no nip bottles. All commented that there were no nip bottles in the trash. I can remember Mary Bruce coming in here with garbage bags full of nips she picked up off of Main Street. So I said I would comment on it and to thank the people involved in getting our nips no longer being sold in town, so people don't drive and drink and throw them out the window. But it was quite nice to do all that picking up and have only one pint bottle in the whole activity. So for those that were involved with it, thank you, Mr. Slavin. I know you were very active in that, but it was pleasant to not have to deal with that trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I will move on to announcements. Mr. Bessie? None? Okay.
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin? Announcements?
Just a quick announcement. The Oyster Festival is at the end of the month. It's one of the best events Wareham has, and I would hope everybody tries to attend. And Mr. Slavin will be leaving the building today.
Mr. Chadwick?
One announcement. So last week, I was out in front of Toby Hospital, joining the nurses and MNA, discussing the hopeful approval of their new contract, which will increase pay for nurses. Will also make it so the charge nurse doesn't have patients, and the schedule will -- for the nurses that are full-time, they will get first choice at the schedule. Unfortunately, right now, if you are a travel nurse, Toby Hospital allows you to pick the schedule over nurses that are full-time, that have been there forever. Unfortunately, don't know why they came up with that or how they came up with that, but that is their rule right now. If anyone's interested in reaching out or has questions about it, feel free, either through Facebook, email. My phone number's all over the Internet. I'll be happy to set anyone up with the Nurses at Toby to hear their side of everything, but I will keep the public informed about it, and once I have more information, you guys will know. That's it.
Thank you. Do you also have a proclamation about the month of May?
Do you want me to read that now, or do you want me?
Yes, please. Now, would you do that now?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Proclamation is for amyotrophic lateral sclerosis. This is the month right now. Whereas amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loss is in connection with the muscles slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas ALS has no cure. And whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance of people living with ALS. And whereas clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through a renewed commitment to the galvanized public awareness and support funding leading to significant investments in ALS research. And whereas the ALS Association, as the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research global, has committed over $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries. And whereas our commitment to accelerate the pace of discovery remains unwavering, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until we can cure it. Whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public awareness of people with ALS' dire circumstances and acknowledges the terrible impact that disease has, not only on the person but on his or her family and the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate the disease. Therefore, we, the Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month. I call upon all Americans to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding, and standing in solidarity with those affected by the relentless disease. Show proclaimed on this day, 7th of May 2024. Signed, the Select Board.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I unfortunately had a short stay at Toby Hospital back at the end of March, and actually spoke to some of the nurses back and forth. They always know they can complain to me because I always listen, and I understand where Jared's coming from. But at the same time, I'd like to also be remiss not basically thanking the new CEO of South Coast Health Services for stepping up. Most of you probably know that Stuart Medical, which basically is an accounting firm, or it's not really a hospital firm, came into New England and started buying up properties and hospitals. And I'm not going to explain what the accounting system was they used, but it was strictly for money, and they basically have failed badly. They're in bankruptcy. It's going to drastically affect medical services, what's going to be available. And the South Coast Hospital has stepped up and is going to try and pull it as much as they can. We need to thank them very much for that. It's not easy because they are a true nonprofit hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a 7:15 hearing, and in keeping with my usual trying to get everything done before the 7:15 hearing and not wanting to take up a whole lot of time. Is Mr. Ronald Spear here this evening? Would you step forward, sir? And take any seat where there's a green button and identify yourself for the record and tell us why you'd like to be a constable here in Wareham.
Okay. Right here?
Yes.
Press this button here?
It's already on, if it's green.
It's already on?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to commend, and I'm from Mashpee, the board on their nip bottle ban. It's worked for Mash, Mashpee incredibly. And it's the worst litter in the world, and it's disgusting for tourists and just local people. So with that said, my name is Ron Spear, and I'm applying for a position as constable. I'm presently appointed at Mansfield and in New Bedford. I'm fully bonded, and I'm a Marine Corps veteran, and also a notary. This is my livelihood. It's my passion. I like what I do, and I like supporting the community. As a municipal contractor, I'm certified through the state as, from DOR perspective, and also DCF. So I do a lot of work for them as a contractor. I'm not employed by them, but I'm contracted by them. I'm married. I live in Mashpee right now. Presently, I used to live in -- I'm sorry. I used to live in Mansfield. That's why I was appointed there, and now we're down here in Mashpee. I drive by Wareham a lot. I do a lot of work in the Wareham area, a lot for Lowell, Bristol County, for the state. Married with one child, and she just graduated from BSU. No more bills. So I'm opening it up for questions. Does anybody have anything for me?
Number three here, we're good.
Ignore him. Any questions? All of the paperwork is in order.
Thank you very much for your service.
Appreciate that.
And thank you for your service, sir. I'll accept a motion. It's on the front page.
Okay, now I'm trying to get it there. I move to approve the new constable appointment for Ronald Spear with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Motion made and seconded to approve Mr. Spear for basically a three-year term. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote because we are now hybrid. Am I correct? Thank you. Well, Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Your paperwork will be in the Select Board office, which is on the second floor, and you can see Ms. Rush, who happens to be sitting in the back with the purple necktie on, right over there. So, and then she will send you down to the clerk's office? Yeah, okay. So, thank you very much.
I thank you.
And you're all set?
You're quiet.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
You, too.
Mr. Chadwick, I will accept a motion on 9A.
Yes, I move to approve temporary signs for Wareham Historical Society Antique Fair, July 4, 2024.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the signs, yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I believe when Center Park was done, in the provisions, it gives the Historical Society the use of Center Park every year, July 4. And I think it also allowed them to put signs up there as well.
Right, but we do it as a pro forma thing.
I understand, but just so people understand, it's actually--
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to approve temporary signs for Wareham Clergy Association, May 19, 2024.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Mr. Chadwick, 9C, please.
I move to approve Buzzards Bay Coalition Watershed Ride on October 6, 2024, pending approval of all departments.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Items D, E, F, and G are not up for discussion this evening. They are not under our purview, and I will ask for a motion on H. Is Tracy Lapana here? Oh, excellent. Would you step forward, please, and identify yourself for the record and explain what it is that you're looking for? Yes.
Hi, my name is Tracy Lapana, myself and my business partner, Susan. We run a yoga studio. It's in the Tremont, now the old company store building, and we thought it would be a great way to, during the summertime and through the fall, bring our community together and make use of a beautiful historic building by holding small events, such as some of our students that do acoustic music. My father-in-law does acoustic guitar. Having them come in on a Friday evening from like 6 to 8, having 15 or 20 people in that are mostly our students, but also people from the local community, come in, be quiet, just kind of relax and hang out together with music, and just, it's wellness, you know? Bring our community together.
Any questions of the young lady? All the paperwork is on. Any questions?
No.
No. Any questions of us?
No.
Okay, excellent. The paperwork is in order, so I will accept a motion to approve. This is only an entertainment license, and you're not going to be going out there with bagpipes and drums at 1 o'clock in the morning. Is that correct?
Oh, gosh, I'm in bed.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion.
I move to issue an annual entertainment license, weekdays only, under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 183A, for the year of 2024, to Tracy Lapana. Thank you. DBA Stella Maris Yoga and Wellness, 7 Elm Street, Wareham, subject to receive all department approvals and required paperwork.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Bagpipes are okay, by the way.
I like bagpipes, but not at 1 a.m.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. The paperwork will be with Ms. Rush, who happens to be sitting in the back with the purple bow tie on. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 7:15. We do have a 7:15 hearing. Mr. Day, do we have Mr. Dara and Ms. Sullivan on there?
I'd like to pay a first attention.
Yep. Would you read the notice of the hearing, please? And because this is a hearing for a change in a CDBG grant, I'm going to ask that the audience, if you are here, just simply sign that you are here. The shows that we do have had a public hearing, there is an audience here, whether you choose to comment on it or not, but it is part of the paperwork that we require.
Number three, you want to pass that up?
Oh. You're so kind.
Do my best. Ready?
Yep.
It's my pen.
Okay. Mr. Dara, I'm going to have the -- we're going to read the notice of the hearing, then we'll open the hearing, and then we'll go forward, okay? Thank you.
Can I read?
Yes.
The Wareham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 7, at 7:15 p.m. in Room 320 at the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road. This hearing will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, making it also available via Zoom. Please see the link below. The hearing purpose is to discuss a program amendment to Wareham Fiscal Year 2021 mini entitlement. Under the proposal, proposed program amendment, the town is seeking to add the Bayview Park sidewalk project as an activity to its fiscal year 21 mini entitlement grant and reprogram $368,582.81 initially budgeted for the Highland Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Project II Bayview Sidewalk Project. The bid received for the Highland Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Project was less than the amount budgeted for the project. This amendment will allow the town to spend these excess funds on the Bayview Park project. Any person or organization so wishing will be afforded an opportunity to be heard. The town encourages a broad spectrum of participation by residents and other interested parties. The link will be provided on town website. The hearing location is accessible to persons with physical disabilities. If you require a translator and accommodation for a hearing impairment or any other accommodations, contact the DPCD no later than Wednesday, May 1st, via telephone with the number of 508-291-3100, extension 3172, or via email at WDARRAGH@COGINCORP.com.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the hearing? May I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
So would.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on opening the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is open. Mr. Dara, would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Certainly. Wayne Dara, President, Community Opportunities Group. We are the town of Wareham's CDBG management consultant.
Is Ms. Sullivan with you this evening as well, or not?
I was expecting her. I believe she is.
Would you let her in, too, please, Mr. Day? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Dara. Explain what it is that we're doing here this evening, please.
Thank you. Chairperson Whiteside, I -- what we basically have here is a robbing Peter to pay Paul sort of situation. Under recent grants, we have included funds for the Highland Avenue Sidewalk Project and funds for the Bayview Park Sidewalk Project. Now that those projects have been bid, and we know what the costs are, we have a mismatch between what we've budgeted under different grants and what the actual costs are. Specifically, we have budgeted more money for the Highland Ave sidewalks than they actually cost based on the bid we've received. I asked permission from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, who oversee the CDBG grants in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if we could just spend those excess funds that we have available for Highland Ave on the Bayview Park Project because they were bid as a single project under a single contract. The answer that came back was no. We cannot just simply do that. So what we need to do in order to reprogram the excess fiscal year 21 funds from the Bayview, from the Highland Avenue sidewalks to the Bayview Park Project is create a new activity in the FY '21 grant. That would basically be the Bayview Park Project again. And then, once we have that established as an activity under the '21 grant, we can then do a budget amendment to move the funds from Highland Avenue to Bayview Park. So basically, this is an exercise to let the town spend all of the money it has earmarked for these two projects.
Thank you.
Those are two steps we have to take. One is, tonight, authorize a program amendment to add Bayview Park to the FY '21 grant, and then, once that's approved by EO HLC, we will then do a budget amendment to move the $350,000 odd thousand from the Highland Ave line item to the Bayview Park line item.
Thank you. The record will show that Ms. Sullivan is here as well. Are there any questions from my board members? Yes, Mr. Slavin? Or comments?
The Bayview Project was something that we were under the gun with the residents of the Onsen area in particular. We had railing along the road there, which was probably about seven, eight feet high up, where people technically could fall off because the railing had gone bad, et cetera. I had made a comment to, I think it was Neil Sullivan, one of the people there that was pushing on it, that if we're going to do this, let's do it once and do it right, because they were going to just fix the railing temporarily. Unfortunately for all of us, since the beginning of COVID, the cost of doing anything has probably gone up three to four times what's been planned. So this particular increase in cost is something that we're basically experiencing everywhere. I just want the public to know that we're just not spending money to spend money. We had no choice because of the cost, and we have promised to do this project. And again, the philosophy is do it once and do it right. It's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from my board members? Mr. Sullivan?
No, I won't. It's not a question, it's a statement. If anybody's ever asked why we need a CDBG consultant, hearing what we just had to do to reallocate some of those funds should be explanation enough. So, thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of the program? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against having this board sign an amendment? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing. 7:15 for CDBG Fiscal Year 21 Program Amendment.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now closed. Mr. Chadwick, I will now accept a motion. And Mr. Dara, if you would listen carefully, I have the document in front of me, but I just want to make sure that we say it correctly, please.
All right. I move to authorize the chair and town administrator-- Always, always. I move to authorize the chair and town administrator to program amendment to create a line item for the Bayview Park Sidewalk Project under the Fiscal Year '21 to grant so the excess funds can be assigned to the project.
Is there--
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the chair and the town administrator to sign. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Mr. Dara, I thought we had the paperwork in front of us, but apparently I don't, but we'll get it to you. It'll be signed tomorrow, and Paul will have it for you.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Okay. We are going to skip over 10A and B, and we are going to listen to a five-minute or less presentation by Glenn Hannington, who is the president of the Wareham Gaetman Association. Mr. Hannington, would you step forward, please, and remember your promise?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We just wanted to introduce ourselves. I'm here with several members. Jay Finelli is our general manager. We have Mike and Mary, Tom Crane and Tom Worth, and they're on the board with us as well. And Mary's very important because she -- not that we're not important, but she's very important because she's looking for host families. And we do give a stipend of $105 a week. And if anyone would like to get involved, let us know.
Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Glenn Hannington, President of the Wareham Gaetman. Well, you heard that, Mary? He has a garage. So historically, in fact, Judy is a former treasurer. She's familiar with us. This is our 97th season. This is our 97th season in Wareham. And we'll be seeing you in a few years, celebrating the 100th anniversary here. 19, well, 1930 would be our 100th anniversary, 2030 for our first championship. And I just wanted to share something quick. This is from the September 4, 1930 Hyannis newspaper. It said, "Members of the Wareham Cape Card Baseball League and Managers are invited as guests at the banquet of the Old Colony Inn in Wareham, celebrating the Wareham championship. The Wareham Chamber of Commerce in honor of the winning of the league pennant by the Wareham Nine. Congressman Charles L. Gifford, Senator D.W. Nicholson, Captain H.L. Cobeth, and J. Herbert Shepherd, the Vice President of the League, were there, and they were going to be getting recognized. A motorcade headed by the Wareham Band was held through Wareham to see in the banquet, and each player was given an individual engraved token by the chamber." So again, that's just for history relative to the Gateman. Just want to say we're going to have a wonderful season. We opened June 15, home against Chatham. There's going to be 20 home games and hopefully some playoff games. We have events planned this summer. From last year, if you remember, we had a first responders' night, and we even had a state police helicopter that night land in center field. Plymouth County District Attorney Tim Cruz sponsors the night, and we're going to be having another, another night, July 20th this year. You'll be seeing the events that we'll be posting. We're also going to be having a literacy night. One of our Secretary Bethno Cotto is going to be working with the libraries. We're going to do that. We have, you know, we have the players, as you know, they all go on to the major leagues. I, for one, like to promote our interns. You know, aside from the players, the obvious, we have interns, whether sideline reporters, broadcasting, medical staff, production teams. They're the future as well. When you, you know, they're scattered all across the country at the professional level. So we're very proud of them. In fact, when I said first responders' night, I think the Wareham Police Chief.
Didn't you sing the National Anthem?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. Can we ask for doing it again tonight?
All right. He did good. And so, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, and everyone's going to be coming into town, and, you know, we have everyone, all the players, the managers, you know, hopefully it's going to fill the coffers of the Wareham economy here. Any questions I can take from you guys?
Can you speak to the fact that you do have clinics and you do have scholarships for those?
That's correct. We do have clinics, as the Madam Chairperson said, and we do have sponsorships. We don't want to have anyone, anyone get shouted out here at all. It can be confidential as well. Well, it's the very, very popular, the clinics, very, very popular. And we also have a program called Field of Dreams, where the little league kids, and softball with the women and the men as well, they come an hour before the game, and through our coach, you know, Ryan Smythe, they go out in the field, meet the players, you know, this is before the game starts, and they'll go out and stand with the National Anthem. That's pretty cool. You know, these kids, you know, seven, eight, nine, or even five, you know, well, downgrading, they think these are the major league, the real deal, and they really look up to these, these players. And so, so what I did was, I brought you a few goodies. I brought you some official, official Cape Card League baseballs.
They cost less than $49.99?
Nice bunch, only as a foul ball.
Just tell me they cost less than $49.99. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Five dollars.
Do you have sons?
What?
How many sons do you have?
I have one son.
You have two sons.
And I'll, I'll let you pass those out to the.
Thank you.
I have some stickers too for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this for Alan's last name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Alan, Alan has come. I, I don't know him that well, but he has shown up at several of our, our events. He's been very loyal to us on several occasions that I've met him and you've come to the events. So we want to thank you for that, and good luck. I heard this is your last evening?
I'm retiring.
Oh, yeah, great.
29 minutes.
I was just, I can answer any quick questions?
So you have a website, and so how to?
Gateman.org, where we have a good social media team, where Major League Baseball is helping all the Cape League teams revamp their whole, you know, their whole websites and social media. And I'll tell you, you know, I don't know if it's my age or not, but these kids are smart. You know, we, we put out internships, you know, for anything, and we get the responses from across the country. And I'll tell you, and again, well, say it again, these kids are smart. I mean, what they know now, you know, through the computers and, and numbers, statistics, and it's unbelievable, these younger kids coming up.
Thank you very much. My daughter actually was an intern many, many years ago, and I spent a lot of time with John Wild, the previous president, who actually celebrated 25 years with the Gateman as, and way back when. I had three cousins, one played first, one pitched, and one caught.
Well, I also, since you said that, I want to thank the John Wild Trust, as well as the matriarch right now, Patty Wild. You know, without their support, let's say, we just wouldn't be here. It'd be awfully difficult to compete against the, you know, the Chatham's, the Howard's, the Brewsters. So we're very, very fortunate that we do have the support of the John Wild Trust and the community. So again, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Mr. Hugh, Philip Hugh, are you here? Is Philip Hugh here? You, okay. So would you let him into the meeting, please? Mr. Hugh has a presentation about the Serpent Priority Protection Maps that have been created. If you would.
He is in the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Hugh, good evening. If you would identify yourself for the record, please, and we do have the handouts. I don't know, do you have a PowerPoint presentation or not?
Hello, everyone. My name is Philip Hugh. I am from Serpent, which is Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, which is the regional planning agency covering Southeastern Massachusetts. I have a very brief presentation. It is very, it is basically the same as what I presented about a year ago, but it's helpful as a refresher, and I'll run through it and then walk through some of the changes to the priority areas. So we have been working on this priority area, regional plan for the past year or so. We've been working with Wareham and the 26 other communities in the Serpent region. So today, I'm just going to quickly give a refresher of what these priority areas are, and then talk about some of the changes that we came up with while working with various representatives from Wareham. So what are these priority areas? So basically, this update is basically a very high-level look at the entire region, helping communities identify priority development areas and priority protection areas, because we want to identify areas for growth, for whether it's housing or economic development, and we also want to identify important areas to protect, such as like natural areas or water resources. So we generally want to place priority development areas in areas that we think could natural growth. We think it meets some kind of regional need and has good access to transportation or infrastructure. Priority protection areas have some kind of ecological, natural, or water resource importance, or they can also be of historic importance. We'll also talk about combined areas, which have elements of both priority development areas and priority protection areas. So how do we determine where these priority areas go? We first start with a lot of data, and we use your on-the-ground knowledge and kind of combine those to find kind of what your community priorities are. So we use data such as existing zoning, land use, infrastructure, as well as environmental data like habitats, water resources, and existing conservation areas. So this is the kind of second update, and the first regional plan happened in 2008 as a result of South Coast Rail kind of being announced, and the region being like, hey, we should probably coordinate around that. In 2013, the boundaries were refined a bit more, and other updates happened based on kind of new information. And what we're doing here today is not really much different than we did in 2013. Really, it's talking to all of our 27 communities and updating boundaries based on new information, new data, and kind of additional feedback. So why are we doing this? Why do we spend a year and running around, talking to all of our communities? These priority areas do help. So for priority development areas, if a community designates a certain area as a priority development area, it helps that community gain access to grants. It kind of like tells the state, hey, this is an important site, and the state is more willing to grant funding. So in this example, in North Attleboro, because this area was designated as a priority development area, it got additional funding for updated zoning, a $1.3 million Mass Works grant for roads, water, and sewer, and the end result are these new apartment units in their downtown area. Priority protection areas, on the other hand, also are a way to kind of put a star on an application to gain additional grant funding. So for Norton, after they completed their priority protection area update, they could get a $575,000 land grant, and in the end, protected 150 acres of this town. And of course, you know, there's lots of other factors. It's not just like because he designated it as so, it will become, it is up to each community to kind of balance which of these are the most important. So where we are in the timeline, last year, we came to around May or so, and we introduced the project around fall. We worked with folks, representatives from Wareham, to kind of, you know, dive deep, do a very ditty-gritty workshopping of the 2013 priority areas. And today, we're excited to kind of present the updates to 2024 priority areas. After this, we're going to take all the community priority areas and have two regional screening workshops to talk about kind of how they all relate, and which community priority areas can be designated as regional priority areas. So this is just a very quick list of the updates that I just, that I pulled from the report. I think you all have copies of the report as well as the map, but I'll go through, it's easier to see kind of the change from the 2013 to the 2024 in this map. So this is an interactive map that you can click, go to at any time to kind of look at things in more detail. So, let's see. First priority area, I want to kind of, well, before I go forward, are there any questions?
No, thank you. Mr. Who, I'm going to just remind you that I have to be out of here. Sorry. We have to be out of here by 8 o'clock, and we do have a couple of other orders of business. I don't want to rush you through this.
All right, yeah, no.
Thank you.
So I guess if y'all had a chance to look through it, I don't have to walk through each one. Are there any kind of thoughts, comments, or questions I can handle?
Mr. Slavin? And we can put this up on our town website, is that correct, Mr. Who?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Good evening, Phil. I just want the public to know, if you go into the Serpent website, they provide these maps, they're interactive, anything you can think of as far as economic development, priority areas for consternation, et cetera, you can go in, and you can actually click and then move around and actually get a lot of information. They put a lot of effort into it. Unfortunately, most of our municipalities don't have the staff or the funds to do this, so please take advantage of it.
And we, we will have it posted on our town website if it's not there yet. I don't remember if it is. I don't think so. Yep. Mr. Sullivan? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Who? Any comments? Any others? It's been a long night already. Any questions for us, Mr. Who?
No.
You welcome the, the public's input, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do also have an interactive map where you can actually add comments, and I will, I can send that kind of link along as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Any, any, well, okay, it's not a hearing. We will have copies, hard copies of this in the office, Select Board office, as well as the information will be online. It is, there have been some changes from the earliest days, and it is, it's an opportunity for us, for the town, to take advantage of some studies that have been done, not on our dime, which is always nice. Anything else for Mr. Who?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Who.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to accept a motion on 10E and F individually, please.
I move to accept a cash donation to the Council on Aging for $100 from Tony and Julie Gomes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, accept a cash donation. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself? Yes, 400.
I move to approve the opt-out reduction fee application for curbside billing, fiscal year 24, in the amount of $2,065.84.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the opt-out reduction fees. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? It is so. I'm going to ask Mr. Sullivan to hold off on his Town Administrator's report. We will move to item 14 on the agenda, and I would ask that Michael Jackman and Susan Williams Gifford step forward. You've heard it a couple of times this evening. This is Mr. Slavin's last official Select Board meeting, sitting as a Select Board member. We did have a little bit of fun with him at town meeting. We have a couple of presentations here this evening. After this meeting is adjourned, we will be having a little bit of less formal party, and you're all invited to stay once we have adjourned this business meeting. Ms. Williams Gifford, why don't you go ahead, please?
Okay, thank you. First of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me, Madam Chairwoman. It's always a pleasure to be here with the Wareham Board. I have the distinct honor of presenting a resolution from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Now, Michael, do you have a resolution, or is yours, because we?
Yours is longer than.
Okay, I've, you've got the condensed version.
But first, before, I was told that Alan Slavin would be the one wearing the bowtie?
Yes.
So I'm at a loss here.
Hi, sir, Alan Slavin.
I am Spartacus.
I'm just number three.
That's pretty good. Okay. Here goes. Honoring Alan Slavin on his retirement from the Wareham Select Board. You didn't think you were going to get away without getting your own wherasses, did you? Okay. Whereas, Alan has served as a member of the Wareham Select Board for 12 years, and a member of the Planning Board, the Council on Aging, the Wareham Historical Society, the Tremont Nail Master Plan Committee, the Marine Resources Committee, the Reestablished Capital Planning Committee, the Bylaw Review Committee for the Fire and Water District, Community Events Committee, and the Charter Review Committee for the Town of Wareham. And whereas, Alan was the Governor's Appointee to the Massachusetts Fisheries Commission and a member of the Local Government Advisory Council, headed by the Lieutenant Governor. And whereas, Alan was a member of the Plymouth County Advisory Board, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Board of Directors, and Massachusetts Select Board Association for Plymouth County and the Cape and. and the Cape and Islands. And whereas Alan was a commissioner for the Southeast Region Planning and Economic Development District, Serpent, and a member of the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, the Bylaw Review Committee, the MBTA Advisory Board, the South Coast Commuter Rail Workshop Group, and the South Coast Rail Task Force for Serpent. And whereas Alan was a member of the South Coast Rail Task Force, Commuter Rail Liaison, and Route 6 and 28 Cranberry Highway Construction Project Liaison. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby join with his colleagues, family, and friends in paying honor and tribute to Alan Slaven on the occasion of his retirement from the Wareham Board of Selectmen for his many years of dedication to the community and extend to him their best wishes, wishes for continued good health and happiness. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded by the Clerk of the House of Representatives to Alan Slaven. House of Representatives adopted April 18th, 2024 by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, Stephen T. James, Clerk of the House, and offered by yours truly, Susan Williams Gifford. Congratulations and thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
We will give you an opportunity to be right here with Mr. Slaven and hand it to him personally so that the press can get a picture, but let's have Mr. Jackman speak too, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Jackman from Congressman Bill Keating's office. Congress, Congress is in session, so Bill is in DC today, so he couldn't be here. So he regrets missing this auspicious occasion, but I'm glad to be here on his behalf. Alan, I don't, I don't think it's any news to anyone here. What a great advocate you've been for Wareham, both with the state delegation and the federal delegation. Whenever Wareham needed anything or needed to be heard and listened to, you were always willing to speak up and make that connection and do so in a respectful, professional manner. And personally, and I know for Congressman Keating as well, we appreciated that opportunity, really, to learn more about the, the community and its needs and what was going on down here and how we could work together. So on behalf of Bill, thank you, and we wish you the best in your retirement. I do have a certificate of special congressional recognition. My print's a lot bigger, so it's not as many words as Rep. Gifford's. Proudly presented to Alan Slaven, it is the practice of this member of the United States House of Representatives to take note of and publicly acknowledge individuals and organizations whose purposeful work and distinguished service has been committed to making meaningful and impactful contributions to the people of the 9th Congressional District of Massachusetts. Attendant to such concern and full, and in full accord with longstanding traditions, this member of the United States House of Representatives is justly proud to recognize and honor Mr. Alan H. Slaven for his many years of dedicated service to the Town of Wareham, including 12 years of service on the Wareham Select Board. Now, therefore, I, Representative William R. Keating, do hereby honor Mr. Alan Slaven for his contributions to the people of Wareham and beyond, given under my hand and seal of the U.S. House of Representatives on this 7th day of May, 2024, signed by William R. Keating, Member of Congress, 9th District, Commonwealth of Mass. Congratulations, Alan.
Why don't you two come on up here and have Mr. Slaven?
Absolutely.
Grab it and get some pictures for the press.
I'd just like to thank both of you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Go around, or come this way, Mr. Jackman. Come this way. I don't care. Just don't trip.
What are you hiding?
Yeah. Say I would be next to you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I'm going to miss you a lot.
Three, two, one.
Jeez.
Pizza.
Thank you.
We also have a, something from the select board and the town employees for Mr. Slaven, which he's going to have to open in the next nine minutes.
Okay, it's going to take him longer than that.
No, it's not.
It's a bow tie.
Sandy, you might have to come up and help him with this.
Turn it upside down.
Thank you, dear. Oh, jeez. Foster can't have anything to do with this.
Read what it says, sir.
It says Alan Slaven, Selectman, Leader, Friend, and Wife's New Tool.
No, it doesn't say that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no further business to come before this board, we will be adjourning and we will be asking you to hang around because part of what we would like to give to Mr. Slaven tonight would not be appropriate in a business meeting. So I do ask that, well, it's not inappropriate. So, Mr. Slaven?
This will be my last time.
See, see this?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn, not debatable.
Second.
Thank you, all.
Roll call? To adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to.
Says, last words right here, it says it.
It's not going to work that way. I'd like to thank everybody in the town of Wareham that's allowed me to spend 12 years helping, plus the six years before that. I will miss this. I'll miss the town employees. Thank you, all.
Thank you for being a great mentor. Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Now, please stay, because now the fun begins.